Good afternoon and welcome to December. Seems like just last week was November. I believe we're moving this fast. Today is December 6, 2021. We are grateful that you have chosen to spend time with us today, so welcome. It is our tradition. We start with a couple of things. We're gonna have a pledge. We're also gonna have a prayer led by our chaplain. Chaplain Taylor, if you'll come forward, this is considered what's considered a solemnizing prayer, and that means it's not for the audience, it's for the commissioners. We take very seriously what we do and looking for interruption and wisdom in what we do. So today is no exception to that. We need wisdom today as we move forward. So Chaplain Taylor, if you'll begin with us, commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Well, Lord, we want to thank you for this period of time that we can be here today, and we thank for County Commissioners, Lord. Thank you for bringing us through this past year to December now and the hard work that they've done. And we thank for that, Lord, and we thank for Rowan County, Lord. We pray you will give them the wisdom they need at this meeting tonight, Lord. Thanks for many, many hours that has been put in by our County Commissioners, and thanks that are well represented throughout the county of Rowan and the work they do. So be with them today and help them, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chaplain Taylor, for being here as always. Appreciate you very much. J Ds?
Thank you. It's our annual time of the year to handle your officer elections. And so at this time, I'll open up the floor for nominations for Chair of the Rowan County Board of Commissioners.
Chairman, I nominate Greg Eds for Chair.
Second.
Move the closing nominations.
Here we have a motion to close the nominations. They're second to close the nominations. All right, nominations are closed. All those in favor of Greg Eds as Chair of the Board of Commissioners?
Aye. Right to vote.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you. And traditionally, I've gone ahead and handled the vice chair while we're doing it, so I'll open up the floor for nominations for vice chair.
Nominate Jim Green.
Second. Move the closing nominations. Second.
All right, motion, motion and second to close nominations. All those in favor of closing the nominations, signify by raising your hand. All right, all those in favor of Jim Green as your vice chair for the Board of County Commissioners, raise your hand. Congratulations, gentlemen. Greg is Chair and Jim is the vice chair. I'll turn the meeting back over to you, Chair.
Well, thank you, and you'll be pleased to know I don't have a speech.
We have an extra one?
Do. Thank you, guys. As we head into a new year, I am really, and I mean this as sincerely as I can muster, it's been a pleasure to be part of this group and see what's being accomplished and to see how this group works together and how each of you are so tuned in to different areas. It really is a group with diverse interests and talents and abilities, and I think it serves this community well, and I just, just thank you. I'm honored to speak on my behalf and have the opportunity to speak for you at times as well, so thank you. We'll move on. Haven't said that, Jim, anything?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I know we have one addition to the agenda, and that is items V and W. One is for fire department funding and the other is ADW change order. Do we have a motion to approve those additions?
Some.
Same.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Any other additions, lady and gentleman? Do you have another one?
Mr. Chairman, I just would ask if the board would consider moving consent item G to board action. It'll be.
The approval of change order one with Carolina Sightworks for a roadway project. Do we have a motion to move that to active agenda? All right, and then we'll, we'll make that item. Do you need it in any specific? Is someone here waiting on that?
No.
All right, then we'll just put it item. 12A is fine.
Thank you.
Okay, so motion to approve the amended agenda. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Some.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and I don't, I think I missed the minutes. I motion to approve the minutes of November 15, 2021.
Some.
Second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we'll move to public comment. First up, we have T J Jenkins. T J, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for letting me speak this afternoon. I know y'all are kind of familiar. I've emailed y'all a few times over the last month. I've emailed Mr. Ds, I've emailed Ed Muir a few times, just kind of looking for guidance or where to go. We're just not getting answers on the questions that we've had. I've, I've reached out to Ed Muir and he's informed me he wasn't able to speak to me. So I'm just kind of trying to reach out to, I mean, I'm a voter of Rowan County. I'm just trying to get answers to some questions that we've had. We've sent numerous emails with not a lot of response. I'm not sure if, I sent them to y'all's government email, so I'm not sure if, how they get to you, but just trying to get some answers on some questions, on zoning answers that Ed Muir stated he would not be able to answer. So I'm not really sure where to go from here. I know top of the chain is the Commissioners, so I thought I would come today and just speak and see if there was something y'all could help us.
If I call you tomorrow and we'll get to work on it, okay?
That would be great.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're very welcome. All right, we also have Karen Jones. Is Karen Jones in the house? Wow, it's good to see you. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. I am here to express my professional and personal support for continuation funding of the post overdose response team. As the Executive Director of a nonprofit agency that is home to Rowan County's only adolescent substance use prevention coalition, I am well aware of the devastating impact of addiction on individuals, families, and communities. I don't have to share with you the frightening statistics on drug use and overdoses in Rowan County. You've seen the newspaper articles, you've heard from the experts, and I'm sure you have talked to parents and family members who are struggling to find and access treatment resources for their loved ones. I don't think I can overstate how desperately we need port as a component of our substance use prevention and harm reduction strategies. The work the team does saves lives. Certainly, I'm not implying that the port team can save all lives or change all of the lives of those with whom they come in contact, but we know that individuals served by port have entered treatment and are working toward their sobriety and recovery. I realize there are some who complain about the fact that our first responders may have to answer repeated calls to the same address for overdoses and suggest that responses should be, for lack of a better word, rationed. But I think back on the last years of my mother's life, when I had to call EMS on at least a half dozen occasions because mom had fallen or her mental state was altered. I am sure there are other frequent flyers who are well familiar to first responders. If we don't suggest rationing our responses to those calls, why would, why would we do so for any other type of call? On a personal level, my family has experienced both the tragic loss of life from a drug overdose and the miracle of a life saved by the administration of naloxone, excuse me. At the time of the non-fatal overdose, port was not available. I am convinced that had the services of a peer support specialist been offered at that time, the trajectory of that life may have been changed for the better. If we, as a society, believe in the sanctity of life, then surely anything that helps preserve and protect those lives is worth our support. I hope you will fully fund the health department's request for port. Lives depend on it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Karen. All right, that's all we had signed in for public comment, so we will move now to item number three. With Scott Shelton. E D C, Scott, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ian, you're usually here with good news.
Well, hopefully promising news. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Board members, for hearing this request today for Project Excelsior. This is an existing company in Rowan County. They're a manufacturer, very well respected. They hire, or they employ a substantial number of people in our community and are considering an expansion due to the increased demand for their products. They're either going to expand at one of their current facilities or elsewhere in the southeast. If we were chosen for this project, the company would create about 40 new jobs over the next two years. About 85% of those jobs would be in the production and warehousing logistics categories. The remaining would be managerial and sales-type positions. Also, along with this, I guess, increase in employment, there would be about $11 million in new equipment and improvements to their facility. Majority of these would be done by the end of 2023. We don't foresee any zoning issues or any permitting issues with the facility. It's zoned appropriately as best we know, and I'm sure the company will work with county staff to go through that process. Now, currently, under your adopted policy, the company would be eligible for a Level 1 grant, which is 75% of the new taxes paid over five years. However, the company did receive a Level 1 grant from the county recently there in the early stages of this grant. So we're trying to avoid a situation where if the board were to agree to incentives, that you have two agreements out there. So what E D C is proposing is an amendment to the original agreement to extend their incentive window by two years, but for those final two years, instead of 75%, the grant would be only equivalent to 33%. In addition to the local incentive requests, we're also asking the state for assistance through their One North Carolina Fund. Of course, this is a discretionary program for job creation, but the county would have to apply for the grant on behalf of the company. There would be a local match, but we feel confident that the incentive grant would cover that local match. I think a lot of numbers that you in your packet, but of course, they were based on the current tax rate and assuming that all the things we've talked about happen, which is about $10 million in new equipment is installed by the end of 2023, and the total investment by the end of 2025 is 10.5 million. And again, I mentioned how the company currently has a current incentive agreement with Rowan County. Again, we didn't want to have a period where, I guess, the original investment was being extended, so to speak, for seven years, where they're getting 75% of that first investment over seven-year period versus the initial five. So again, that overlap period would be for three years, and that's where the first project, and again, the second project would overlap, but the final two years, again, is 33%, and those are the numbers in your packet that are based on these scenarios. And also, too, in the scenarios we laid out for you, we factored in depreciation as best we could using the state's depreciation Schedule A for manufacturing equipment. We also assumed 11-year lifespans for these projections. And again, for the first two years, and this is that first project, you see the county's net revenue is about $36,600, and again, that's for the first project only. But when you get into years three, four, and five, that's that overlap I mentioned, and during that time, both projects would be getting 75%, but the net revenue for the county along that time is just under $110,000. But then when you get into years six and seven, that's just the second project, and that's that 33% that I mentioned earlier. And if you see there, the net revenue for the county is about $162,000. And then over 10 years, factoring in all the different scenarios, you're looking at net revenue to the county of about $549,000. So again, what the E D C is asking the board to consider is an amendment to the existing agreement to extend it by two years with a grant percentage for those final two years of 33%. Another thing we're asking for is if the state earmarks him for a 1 N C, that the county consider applying for that grant on the company's behalf. And in summation, again, 40 new jobs over the next two years and about $550,000 in new tax revenue for the county over 10 years. And of course, as always, an opportunity to support an existing Rowan County manufacturer. So that's the basics of it. I'll be glad to answer any questions from the board.
All right, if no questions, Scott, is anyone from the company here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, then just stay close. We will open the floor. We're gonna have a public hearing. Public hearing is so that the public can have input on any incentive grants that we agree to. So we'll see if anyone has anything they'd like to say about this. Come forward, April. If there's anyone online that would like to speak, let us know.
Yes, anyone joining us remotely, if you can use your raise your hand feature within the Zoom application, we'll recognize you. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anyone.
All right, hearing none, then we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve incentive grant as proposed for Project Excelsior?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioners. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Scott, thank you very much. Go get to work. We'll see you in two weeks, right?
Mr. Chairman, wasn't there another piece to this? Where he was asking us to apply for a grant?
Do we have to approve that, Scott?
Yes, if the board would authorize the application of a 1 N C grant if the state earmarks it for the company.
Okay, do we have a motion to do that?
Sure.
All right, in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Pierce. Right now, we'll move on. Shane Stewart, quasi judicial hearing for S U P O 2-21. It's amendment for Taylor Clay Products. While they're coming forward, anyone that expects to speak during this, if you'll come forward and be sworn in. The hearing for consideration of amending S U P O 2-21 is now in session and will focus on an application submitted by Bryce Evans on behalf of Taylor Clay Products for 12,000 square foot building expansion on tax parcel 408-020 located at 1225 Chuck Taylor Lane. If you feel that any member of the board may have a conflict of interest in hearing the case, please address the board now prior to any testimony or information being presented. When the board enters into deliberations to decide the case, no further testimony may be presented. The board will render one of the following three decisions. One will approve the permit as requested or with additional conditions. Two will continue the request or three deny the request. All parties who plan to testify in this case may come forward and be sworn in. Those who testify must state their name and address at the podium for the benefit of the board's clerk. All material presented must be given to the clerk and will become part of the record. This board can only accept sworn testimony. No hearsay evidence is admissible. Shane, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shane Stewart, Rowan County Planning Office, 402 North Main, Salisbury. About three months ago, the Commission approved a special use permit for an expansion at this location for Taylor Clay, and the only reason we're here is based on our ordinance, which is subject to the general statutes. Anytime you have a site-specific application, the statutes do not allow any kind of change in density or square footage. So it is a process, but we do have to amend our previous amendment from three months ago. So the building expansion goes from 78, 75 to 12,000, and this is the location of the new building here. The only other change that we noticed is staff, as they're adding 11 parking spaces to the site. I did not include anything else in the presentation here since we just touched on this. I really feel like the board can accept your previous findings would make sense, and they're on the screen here, and I can pass out if the board. I believe just a simple motion to accept the previous findings would be sufficient. Any questions?
Anyone here from the company that wants to speak?
The contractor's here, if there's any questions of him.
All right, if no questions from Shane, and if, if no one from the company's here, if the contractor doesn't have anything to say, then we will. Any questions for anyone? No? All right, we'll go ahead and close this hearing then. And then, do we have a motion to approve the previous findings of fact? All right, motion, you gotta be quicker. Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See, it was easy. And then, do we have a motion to approve S U P O 2-21?
Some.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Lot of work, Shane, I know, but thank you wherever you went. Thank, there you go. Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
All right, guys. All right, I don't know if we've done any of these road name changes before, have we?
Long time ago.
Generally, yeah. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we got four road naming items here today, and the way we'll go about this is that I'll give information on one road name change. We'll have a public hearing for that road name, and then we'll move on to the next one. So we'll start off here. This is an unnamed street off of Old Union Church Road. There are nine properties that all access via this street, and we received a road name petition that had seven of nine spots filled out. And since it was a non-unanimous petition, it requires a public hearing. So for this particular street, they've requested the name of Farmstead Lane.
Farmstead Lane.
Do we have any other questions?
All right, so we'll just open the floor for a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on the renaming to Farmstead Lane, please come forward. All right, seeing them, we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve the renaming to Farmstead Lane? Favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right, the second one we have here is Carter Loop Street. It's got a petition to be renamed for Hobby Farm Lane. This one came about because Carter Loop Street here intersects with Carter Loop Road, and that has caused some confusion in both people trying to get to the site, either for deliveries and just trying to find you on Google. And so we've got a petition of two of the four property owners have petitioned to rename it to Hobby Farm Lane. So on the same issue, it was not a unanimous petition, so it requires a public hearing.
All right, we'll open the floor to a public hearing. Would anyone like to come forward and talk? I give an opinion on Hobby Farm. What is it? Hobby Farm?
Hobby Farm Lane.
Lane, okay, Hobby Farm Lane. Anyone? All right, if not, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve Hobby Farm Lane?
I had a question real quick. You say not unanimous, but that doesn't necessarily mean they were against it. They just didn't reply.
So they offered up a petition, and two of the four property owners signed off on it. So as part of the process, everybody else received notification, both in the mail and a sign was posted on-site of the hearing. So if they didn't want a road name, they had an option to either come up here or give us some sort of heads up beforehand that they'd have opposition to the name.
Gotcha, okay.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve Hobby Farm Lane?
Some.
In a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the next one is Old Woodleaf.
So this one came about because way back when they realigned Woodleaf Road with Jake Alexander, this road segment here didn't actually receive a name from the county, but since it has three houses that are, that access off of it does need to be named per county ordinance. We reached out to the property owners, and we sent petitions in the mail to them, and we didn't receive anything back from them. And since we didn't have a petition, county staff had to present a name for it instead. And we looked on N C D O T, and they already have been using Old Woodleaf as the road name for that road. So we decided that'd be the road name we'd go with and bring before you today.
I always thought that was called BP Cut Through Road.
I use it for. That's what my wife calls it.
Is it? All right, we'll open up the floor. Does anyone want to speak on renaming Old Woodleaf Lane? All right, if not, then we'll close the public hearing, and we have a motion to approve that name.
Some.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then Summersdale.
So the last one here is unnamed driveway off of Smith Road. There are currently two houses that access off this driveway, and we have a new person looking to build a house right here on this parcel, which would bring up the third house off of that road. They presented a petition to us that had two of the five lots off of it that signed the petition. So as it's an ununanimous petition, we had to bring it to the board today.
We'll open the floor. Is there anyone that would like to talk about Summersdale Lane? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve the name Summersdale Lane?
Some.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, Aaron, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Shane, S N I A 08-21, welcome back.
All right, the board's comfortable with this drill, so if you're keeping tabs at home, I want to know how many lots are left in Mooresville Motorsports, because we've had several here recently. There's about six, so six undeveloped lots that would receive allocations at some point. This is one of the ones that A B R Properties has filed for. I don't know if you're like me, you don't remember what happened yesterday, but a couple of years ago, the board approved the development of this tract for A B R Properties. They're kind of flipping the site and doing the same thing, transposing it to be a 12,000 square foot structure here for another race shop, and they'll have one access point here and share it's sort of a parking lot. So it's in the same watershed, Cottle Creek, and of our 10%, we still have 1.4% remaining in that watershed to allocate the intensity. So that's the 1070 option, and so this request meets all standards of approval.
Shane, one question.
Yes.
The 1.4%, how big of a building can you even put up for that much water runoff?
So in terms of the. Here's our breakdown. This is the lot size, which is about 0.84 acres, I believe. I'm sorry, it's 15,000 square foot for the building. I said 12. What you can do by right is 4,410, that's 12%. So it's definitely problematic, and I guess if you're thinking more in terms of we've got 10% of our entire watershed we can allocate, and since 94, or not 94, yes, 94, we've allocated 1.4%. So there's quite a bit remaining, but at some point, it's going to be gone. And I think in the, in the upcoming year or so.
That we know of.
So.
Never mind.
So we will have to discuss. But at any rate, for right now, and the other thing, too, there's obviously a parallel. When the commission zones property, industrial, commercial, that's sort of the first step, just like we talked with Doug Foley's development. You know, that's one of those actions, you zoned it, and then there's some sense of allocation being tied to the zoning designation, but there's still schools, churches, et cetera, that come in in the rural areas, zone RA, that may need this allocation. So I don't know if that answers your question. That's the bigger picture, but specifically, that's all that they can do right now, 4,410. So, and again, those six other lots, they'll be coming back to the board, but for the most part, they're one acre, maybe two at the most. Yes, ma'am.
We've seen, we've gotten a lot of these in the past few years, and we've treated them pretty orgily. But recent.
But a recent example we know of, at some point, we're going to have to pay attention to them. You know, I just wonder at what point we really kind of get a plan in mind as the there's going to be a point where legally we have to say no. So I think and we're nowhere near that now, but I think maybe as a Christmas gift to the planning department, we could maybe put in your to-do list in your stocking for this year, maybe us having a conversation about what we, what we want that to look like. And because these are small projects, but we have some really, really big projects heading this way. And I think we, we need to be.
It's on our list and we're, we're thinking of how to approach that and we'll talk to the board in the future.
And Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Better than coal. All right, Kelly, welcome.
Did we approve this? I didn't hear a motion. That's the reason I ask.
All right, motion to approve SNIA O eight dash two one. Second, all in favor, say aye. Craig, thank you for being here with us today. Otherwise, we'd be lost. All right, Kelly, welcome.
Thank you. Several years ago, I came before you to ask, as the county's ADA coordinator, that we put out a request for proposal to have an organization come in and help us become in compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act Title II regulations for the county. You all graciously agreed to let us put out an RFP and we chose John McGovern with the WT Group to do a evaluation study of the county and to write a report for us. And now we are bringing that report forward with the hopes of adopting a plan to look into our future approximately 11 years to implement a series of changes to come into compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act. So John is here to talk about the process of the evaluation, the report itself, and then answer any questions that you may have. So this is John McGovern.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board of Commissioners. I'll spend a little bit of time just talking about the ADA requirements as well for existing facilities. I'll spend a moment talking about some of the enforcement trends and methods that we see other counties up against. I'll describe the process that we use when we audited sites and facilities. Talk about the transition plan. That's the key deliverable here. And then spend some time about, talking about the program and policy report. And then close with some next steps and a thank you to some of the key staff. So requirements for existing facilities, there are several. The Department of Justice and the Title II regulation makes it clear that every existing site has to be evaluated, has to have an access audit against the current state and federal design standards. There's no grandfathering, so it doesn't make any difference how old a site is. It still has to be compared to the current design standards for accessibility. And this is a requirement that's been around since January 26 of 1992 and was to have been completed by 1993. Most counties, most cities, most others, units of local government did not meet that deadline. I mentioned the design standards in our mind access is a function of three factors. One is certainly design. Two is construction. The designer might have got it right, but it might have been constructed wrong. And three is maintenance. So these three pieces really blend together. And when we're in the field looking at sites, we're not trying to figure out if it was a design issue or a maintenance issue or a construction issue. We're just trying to figure out if it is compliant. So as I mentioned, we do adhere to the federal 2010 standards for accessible design. Or to the North Carolina Building Code, if it includes a more stringent requirement. That's part of the requirements of the ADA. I think sometimes people think that the design standards change frequently. They haven't. They've only changed once in 30 years. Park and park assets were added to the standards in 2010. Prior to that, the 1991 standards addressed buildings and restrooms and parking and doorways and so forth. Those portions of the 1991 standard stayed in and were published in 2010. There is some Department of Justice guidance here, certainly for unique sites. If there is a one-of-a-kind site like a jail, you can't relocate jail services. You can't offer jail services at another site that is accessible. So for unique facilities, one-of-a-kind facilities, there's a higher emphasis to make it a greater priority for retrofit. Recurring sites are a little bit different. If you have three libraries, is it arguably enough to have one be made accessible? If you have 10 parks, is it arguably enough to have three be made accessible? So that's part of the judgment that we apply. And that's in the Department of Justice language called the Program Access Test. You're not so much just looking at the bricks and mortar of the site, but what opportunities go on here? This is a program today, being able to make public comment to the board here remotely or in person. So opportunities are what the Department of Justice is really trying to get at here. Enforcement relief under the ADA is intended not, it's intended to be injunctive. In other words, it's just intended to get a county or a city to do something it wasn't doing. Stop doing something it was doing or change the way it does something. You certainly have more than 50 employees, so you have to have a 35.107 grievance procedure. We suggest that you don't call it a grievance procedure. There's no sense in making it adversarial. So we recommend that you call it something like an internal access and inclusion solutions process, because that's what Kelly's trying to do. She's trying to solve the problem along with the person who brought it to her. I don't have to go to Kelly. I can go to the US Department of Justice, or if it's a parks-related issue to the Department of Interior, or if it's a school or library issue to the Department of Education. And they can send investigators out and they can ask you to enter into a settlement agreement. There aren't a whole lot of decisions issued through DOJ and DOI and DOE issue even fewer on an annual basis. I can skip all that and go right to federal district court. There have been a handful of interesting federal district court decisions about the ADA. Casey Martin, the golfer, is certainly one that comes to mind. So again, this is the least likely to occur. It's the most expensive. It's the least predictable of all. And lastly, the Department of Justice has a program called Project Civic Access where they will call you up and say, we've selected Rowan County and we're going to visit. And we're going to look at your policies and your transition plan and how you provide inclusion supports. And they typically stay if they come for about a three-year period and then invite you to enter into a settlement agreement. So you're, you're way ahead of the curve on these, taking the actions that the county has taken on a voluntary basis is much better. It leaves you in the driver's seat. Our process and our site reports. Over time, our process has changed. We do use a cloud-based app. I don't know what the cloud is, but it works. So while our team is in the field gathering data at one of your facilities, it sends the data to the cloud and the report starts being written. We do use customized checklists that reflect North Carolina requirements as well as the federal requirements. But we've also changed them based upon our own experience as well. We do use two-person teams at larger sites. Certainly at times, we just operate as a one person with the app. But the two-person teams allow us to move through a site a little bit more quickly. And we use pretty simple tools. This is replicable for your staff in the future. Digital level, a two-foot level, tape measure, and then the experience that our staff have. Site reports are really the lead-in to the transition plan. They're full of detail. They describe the deficit and a solution to the deficit. We measure or look at everything at a site. It cites to the federal or the state standard. We always include an image to clarify the location of the deficit. We want to make sure that in 2027, that county staff know exactly what we were talking about when we wrote the report in late 2020. And it also notes whether or not we think construction tolerance can apply or whether the retrofit is technically infeasible. Technical infeasibility arises when altering a room like this might require moving a load-bearing wall or element. That means you don't have to do it. It's technically infeasible. The transition plan is, as I said, the key deliverable here. It's spelled out in the Title II regulation at 35150D. There is some DOJ guidance, but as I said, for recurring assets, we strive for a minimum of one of three being made accessible. With the site reports, you will be able to easily identify the deficit, find what we recommend for the solution and the treatment. We also name the person responsible for barrier removal. That's one of the requirements for the transition plan. And lastly, the fourth requirement is that you note the date by which barrier removal will occur. We know that no county can operate without cost references. That was also part of, part of the RFP that you issued. So we do develop cost references for planning purposes. They're not an engineer's estimate because there's not a design for any of the solutions. Design was not a part of the scope. Just a couple of thoughts about timing. There's no set number of years for a transition plan. We recommend that you aim for around 11 years here. And we would suggest that on an annual basis, be certain to budget and expend resources towards retrofits. I know from time to time, a city or a county has felt like, hey, let's take a year off from transition plan activity. And that's not the best risk management approach. I think staff awareness is a key to success. Kelly and I have gone through the Excel spreadsheet that the transition plan deliverable is in. And there's a really simple way for you to sort it so that the work that requires no contractor cost shows up first. And I think in your transition plan, you had about 400 different tasks that were mainly things you could accomplish with current human and fiscal resources and with some training that county staff could implement. So that's a great way to get you moving down the path toward compliance. And lastly here, I would suggest strongly that you blend this with other county plans. Whether it's a capital improvement plan or various replacement schedules that you have. Don't let the transition plan be in a silo by itself. That's not the most efficient way to do it. In our transition plan, we did have phases. Phase one tended to be low-hanging fruit or alterations that should have been accessible when they were made and they're not. So we pegged that at about five years at about $2.6 million. Phase two included elements new to the standard, so that's park and recreation assets primarily. So we put that at three years at about a million two. And then phase three is another three years, again, at about a million two. So stretching it out for 11 years, as Kelly mentioned in the beginning. We also had some great Zoom interviews. COVID had a, I know COVID's had a huge impact on the county as well, but COVID had an impact on this project too. So we had great Zoom interviews with groups of staff to identify what their experience was with regard to people with disabilities. Who would they go to if a problem relating to access or inclusion arose? I thought stealth, the staff were really well-prepared. They were very receptive to the idea of making modifications to better serve people who have a disability. And our report there is a deliverable that recommends some changes. Some are simple, like the access and inclusion problem-solving or solutions process that I mentioned earlier. Kelly was real. We had a lot of ups and downs. This was supposed to be a project that ended at the end of 2020 and it obviously didn't because of factors that were beyond everybody's control. But Kelly was always ready with an answer. If she didn't know the answer, she got the answer and got back to us so that we could finish our project to you. So thanks. It was a pleasure to work with you. And I'll stop there. And if I can answer any questions, I'd be glad to do that.
So looking at your spreadsheet, looks like maybe a third or more of this is parks related. Is there certain things in parks that I guess stand out? Is this every park or is it something that? What is it about parks that are so costly?
Key piece of the parks issue is that when parks were designed before 2010, you might have an asset like the county sealed. So maybe it's a playground or a sports field. But there was no way to get to it. So for a lot of the park issues, one of the key issues was creating an accessible route. Dirt and grass are never an accessible route. So that was probably an issue at every single park. I think other common issues too were parking. Parking is hard to get right as well as restrooms. So if there was a facility with restrooms, and certainly if there's a facility that's parking, then that probably got dinged a little bit more often.
Gotcha. Another thing I noticed is that West Ryan Library that we just opened is already out of compliance, or was it out of compliance when it was re-engineered?
It's common for us to find a new facility that does not completely comply. It's not you, but in another state, a multimillion-dollar project, in addition to an existing facility, every single restroom that was supposed to be accessible failed because the contractor mounted the grab bars at the wrong height. So when things like that happen, it's, it's, it's a message to, I think, the county staff as far as project management. It's a reminder to hold the designer's feet to the fire to make sure that they're putting the, they're giving the contractor the right advice about where to mount things as simple as grab bars.
I got you. And I agree with what you said earlier. I think we need to kind of blend this in of what plans are for county, because I think Crawford Building's $315,000, but I'm not sure long-term what we're going to be doing with that building. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you and your group and both Kelly. I know y'all have been working a really long time. It's something that is required. I know it's not the most interesting subject, but it's required and it's important. So thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to meet you, Aaron, after our 11:30 email exchanges.
That's early for him. Page 10 talks about ADA transition plan requirement, the last bullet being named the county official responsible for assuring compliance. Is that Aaron or Kelly?
Kelly. And that, that's all required. Yeah, so if we, if we were to get audited or get in trouble, a lot of, as I understand it, y'all can just jump in and if you've already said this or I'm saying it wrong. When, when they, and I don't know who they are, but when the regulators come in, that's one of the things they'll write you up and fine you for is, is not doing what we've been doing. So that's a lot of the, just having the, the, all, Kelly is the, the ADA compliance officer, having a designated person. That's one of the easy, that's, that's the low hanging fruit when, when they come in.
Aaron's right. And I'd add to that short list, the notice language on the bottom of your agenda for today. That's a requirement. So language like that makes people who have a disability know that they can come to a meeting and get support so that they can address the board. and get support so that they can address the board. Some of them have them, but some of them don't, right? And I think the other one is the grievance procedure that I talked about earlier, Aaron. That's a requirement as well.
One of the things that John mentions in his report is that we have a certified ADA coordinator. So I received my ADA certification prior to you hiring me coming to county. And so this is just a continuation of that certification. So I'm maintaining that and keeping that. So glad to serve the role for the county.
All right. So Kelly, your recommendation is that we adopt the ADA self evaluation final report and transition plan?
I do, and I would also say that I would work very closely with Jim and the directors. As much time Jim wants me to give to him prior to each budget cycle of each fiscal year to determine what's possible and feasible. And I think if I'm not mistaken, that although we have these in these phases, we can switch things around when we need to. So if something becomes a priority or we have a year where we don't have necessarily the types of funds that we need, then I can, you know, Jim and I can work together to see what's really possible. But as he said, I think it's important that we, and I'll do that, make sure that I keep the effort up every year to get it into the bit, the budget for the following year and try and keep very close track to make sure that we make all of our improvements.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion to adopt the ADA self evaluation final report and transition plan?
Some.
Take it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Randy, welcome.
Good afternoon.
Most ask questions.
Then. When? Well, I have Mr. Nick Stewart with Open Broadband here, and I think Jeff Lloyd is also on. He's driving to Rowan County. So if you don't mind, I'll allow Open Broadband to give an update. And after that, I've got a couple of things we're watching. If you don't mind, I'll mention those for your awareness. Nick, I'll turn it over.
Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, that's good to see you all again. I wanted to give you an update on the open broad broadband project that we've been working on here in Rowan County. Obviously, you're aware that we've had a few delays and I wanted to give you some explanation of those. One of the larger factors has been, or was with Duke Power. They were having some issues giving us a clearance to get our electricity installed, but we've since resolved that and actually took care of all of that today. The equipment is a hundred percent in and certified as well. We've also been juggling some supply chain issues, which is a negative thing, but something positive actually came out of that. The manufacturer that we utilize is called Ubiquity. They have a line of products that we've been using across most of our footprint. And then a couple of years ago, they released a newer line of products that has more efficiency and better distances and better speeds. For the two towers that we're deploying here in Rowan County, we're actually using the newer equipment, which has better supply than the previous equipment that we're using across the rest of the footprint. So the county is actually going to benefit from that. As far as timeline goes, today, myself and a couple of other technicians were actually out programming the equipment that I just referenced for the cellphone towers. The electric work was completed as well today. Tomorrow, the seventh, our tower climbing team will be climbing the Rockwell Tower to install that equipment. Wednesday, the eighth, we will be having our tower climbing team climb Young's Mountain as well as having our fiber optic service delivered to Rockwell. By the end of this week or beginning of next week, we're looking at our first few installs in the county. So we lost some times. Sir?
What date was that?
By the end of this week or the beginning of next week?
This week.
Yes, sir.
Write that down.
Yes, sir.
Live at the end of the week?
End of this week, beginning of next week. Yes, sir. Both towers will be done, actually. Yes, ma'am.
Maybe use your computer.
We're working on scheduling based on the requests that we've gotten and the light of sight that we've been able to confirm. I put out an email to a couple of people yesterday. We're still waiting to get some feedback from those potential customers today. And then we'll get them scheduled and up and running.
So all the folks that we had to sign up with you, registered whatever you asked for then.
Yes, sir.
The ones that are going to be in line of sight.
Yes, sir.
Will be able to receive this.
They will. Yes, sir.
By the end of this week.
Not all of them at the same time, but, because we have to go to each individual home and install equipment on each house.
Okay. So by the end of the week, you will be calling these folks?
Emailing most likely. Yes, sir. But by the end of this week, beginning of next week, we will have customers installed with high speed internet in Rowan County.
So line of sight is a technical term, but you were also talking about, and I don't know what this technical term, non-line of sight, which was that technology also going to be included?
Not on the tower, but we will be installing hub locations on the ground that will be able to penetrate through trees and get those customers connected as well.
Have you secured permission on those sites yet?
Not yet. That goes on a case by case basis. So we may, for example, get a customer request. We go out and take a look at their home and say, you do have line of sight, but four of your neighbors do not have line of sight. Would it be okay if we put on one additional piece of equipment to allow your neighbors to also receive internet? The homeowner would agree or not, and then we would reach out to those other surrounding homes and take it from there.
Well, refresh our memory. Like a satellite, what will, will satellite dishes be installed for line of sight folks?
They're not satellite dishes. They're smaller than satellite dishes. Maybe the size of a basketball, thereabouts, will be installed on their homes and then cable ran from that equipment inside of their homes and then a router that they're used to connect their computers and phones and tablets, whatnot, to the internet.
So the neighbors that don't have line of sight will essentially be feeding off of that piece of equipment.
Correct. We.
Evidently transmitting off of that one neighbor.
Correct.
But that's the extra piece of equipment.
Yes, sir. So that instead of one basketball sized dish, there will be two of them. And we've done this over and over again in several counties in South Carolina, and we're doing the same thing in Virginia as well. So.
Are we going to have any problems with line of sight in December being different than line of sight in May?
That absolutely. And that's something that we are mindful of while we're doing our installations. Just because you have line of sight from one corner of the house where the leaves have fallen off doesn't mean in the spring you'll have that same. So we tend to try to project that as best we can and move the equipment to locations that that's not going to be an issue. But very good question.
So, okay, so you get it all installed and what speed down and what speed up?
So we have three plans, three pricing plans. Our twenty five megabit package is forty nine ninety nine a month. Our fifty megabit package is, I'm going to grab my phone so I don't. Rather take a second and get it right than to give you incorrect information. So our twenty five megabit plan is forty nine ninety nine a month. Our fifty megabit plan is sixty four ninety nine a month, and our hundred megabit plan is eighty four ninety nine a month. And that's everything. There's no.
But is that all down and up?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. There's no taxes or equipment rental fees or anything like that. We do charge a one time installation fee of one fifty, but that's it. The rest is just the transparent pricing that I mentioned a moment ago.
And what was a hundred megabyte again?
It is eighty four ninety nine a month.
So what can the Salisbury Post and the county do to help advertise?
Well, one thing we're going to do is take pictures, then putting it up on the tower.
I think Randy's going to come out.
Yeah. If, if they're not there, then we won't have a picture to take.
Which we will. We take photos as well while we're doing it.
As soon as the picture's taken, we'll put it on the, those social media. Is it Facebook and, and, and we'll give it to the band.
Well, let's just talk about a good strategy of getting that word out because this is great news. We've been waiting on this for four years? Three years?
I'm very excited.
Yeah.
Very excited.
Well, we're excited for you.
We've actually hired a couple of extra people that we're going to be deploying in the county to make sure that we can get customers installed quickly and as efficiently as possible. So.
How did the signup go? Did you get the?
We did several hundred. Yes, sir. Several hundred initial people. That allows us to plot those addresses on a map, and that gives us a great indication of specific areas and pockets that could use our service, but also areas where we may end up needing to deploy hubs, which is a good thing for us to know before we actually are physically on the ground looking. So saves us some time. It gives us an idea of the areas to send a team to go look at, hey, if you had to put a hub here, where would it be? And they go out and answer those questions for us.
So you said you were having supply chain issues. Is that going to affect, is that?
We're navigating that as best as we can. The Ubiquity, it's called L T U, is the most, their most advanced equipment now. We have forty radios for customers in hand right now. And then yesterday I ordered another ten and about once a week, I'm going to keep ordering another ten. We have to maintain cash flow stuff, but what I don't want to happen is we come to a point where we have three or four customers needed to be installed, but we have to have them wait a couple of weeks for stuff to come in. So I'm trying to stay ahead of that curve as best we can.
Well, I might be speaking out of turn here, but cash flow shouldn't be an issue. And I, again, I don't know what that means, but this has been a goal of this board and, and the county. Get broadband into the community. So there's anything legally we can do to address this issue.
And just so we're on the same page, sorry, part of what I meant by that is we've, we're spending our resources building the foundation before we get the drapes and whatnot in. So we are managing and forecasting and doing it well. But we can't, to go out and buy five hundred radios and have them sitting for three months wouldn't necessarily make sense. So.
You know, that's one thing. And from our standpoint, from the county, we'll be approaching our third payment of the open broadband contract. So as soon as they have service up and operational, that triggers that. So we'll ask for an invoice as soon as you have that operational and then you're able to invoice us that, that third, for that third payment.
So my overly broad statement is to, to Rowan County, if there's a way that or that we're never waiting on equipment, if it's a cash issue, you know what I mean? Whatever that means.
Supply chain is definitely a bigger factor, but try, like I said, trying to stay ahead of that as best I can.
That's good news.
Thank you all for your time and look forward to seeing you again.
Don't forget your harness.
And if I can ask one question of you, Nick, since you're here. One thing just for clarification is that you have both line of sight and non-line of sight with LT technology on that as well. So when is it that you need to use a piece of equipment on a home to get to someone else?
Sure. So a good example, in Alexander County, there's a home that sits on a hill. Behind that hill is kind of a gully that has three other homes in it. Because of the hill and the house, we aren't able to directly see those three houses that are in the gully. So we're utilizing the first house that I mentioned as a hub. We do have line of sight to it, putting equipment on it, and then on the backside of the home, putting the equipment that's going to feed to the three homes in the gully there. We're dealing with terrain and trees and just getting creative and making sure that we can hit the people who need service the most.
We're glad you came today. Thank you for the good news.
Thank you.
This would have made him wait five hours this time.
But you have to stay for the rest of the day.
Thank you. And do you mind if I give you a quick update on some other grant opportunities? And thank you, Nick. That was, I knew they were making progress and they were working on some things. I'm glad they were here to mention that. The state budget did pass, and I did want to make the commissioners aware of a couple of things that we're watching, and there'll actually be some sessions tomorrow that I'm going to find some more details. But the great grant that the state has had for a while in this latest revision that's written out rightified in the budget bill, ARPA funds or ARP funds are able to be used for that. I'm just saying that there's more to it than just the simple fact of our funds being used because the great program that they're now have is only for unserved using the ARP fund. So that does change the unserved, underserved. And with this rollout, the unserved is definitely going down from that perspective.
Can you explain that to some of us that are not quite as technically?
Yeah, it is as simple as this. Unserved means you do not have access to any broadband provider.
Dial up stuff and?
Dial up does not count. Dial up, actually dial up and satellite do not count for that perspective. So this is only if you can't get DSL cable modem or fiber for that. So that's what they're considering unserved. And I think if you look at it statewide, there's a lot of completely unserved population. So that's where they're putting the great grant funds in that program. So underserved means you at least have a provider. You may not be happy with that one provider, but you at least have an option. So they're focusing on the unserved first.
So what is this area defined as?
We are predominantly a combination of served and underserved. There is, there are sections now, I should clarify, this does come from the fact that Spectrum who presented, Tom Warner, Charter Spectrum, had presented that they're using federal dollars to build out to some of that unserved location. And so that's what ties up.
In six years.
Yes, and the way it's worded in the bill, that actually is covered as well. So any federal money that's obligated, especially if you're using ARP funds. So there's great grant, there's great grant, and if Nick, since you're still here and you haven't escaped yet, there's also a second part of great that is specifically for fixed broadband and satellite. And the goal of that from the state is to allow fixed broadband. And I'm just learning about this in the past three or four days, so I haven't even had a chance to ask. But this does help cover the cost of that equipment that goes to the residents as well, kind of like a rebate type program, but it actually would be the broadband provider applying to the state.
If they were uncertain.
This particular program for the great grant, this other section of the, the state bill allows fixed wireless, which is what open broadband is providing, to just go straight to the state and say, we have eligible homes. There's, there's more details. I'm not going through all of them because I'm not sure. We're still getting interpretation from the school of government, but it would allow for coverage of that initial cost of equipment. Do you have an install fee for, yeah. So what is that?
It's a hundred and fifty dollars, which is, excuse me, actually subsidized. When we do an installation using the previous generation of equipment, we spend about two hundred dollars just in hardware plus the labor to do an install for a resident or customer.
Okay. So the potential of this is that open broadband could look to that grant to actually provide that installation for free. They, they would pay open broadband if they were a grantee that amount. So we're watching that and we'll be working with you and getting the information on that piece.
And you mentioned the grants for unserved communities. That's actually something that we have experience with as well. We're doing that in Gloucester and Matthews County, Virginia currently.
Yep. And that's the third is there's a connecting or completing access to broadband, which is the CAD program. Way more complicated. I'll just say it's a one thirds. County does a third, state does a third, and the broadband provider. So that's what's in the state budget bill for expanding broadband. At least wanted to mention it. The other thing I'll mention about supply. The other thing I'll mention about supply chain in looking it up because I know we have citizens that are interested in the satellite technology through Starlink. There's been some announcements and if you look at the website, most addresses are being pushed to the middle of twenty twenty two for that. So they've run into supply chain issues as well with that equipment at the home. So so overall update, but thank you, Nick. I appreciate it.
Randy, thank you. Appreciate it. It's good news. All right. So Liz.
Welcome.
Well, thank you. Have to bring it down just a little bit.
Weren't saying a word.
Well, good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, Staff, Citizens. I appreciate the opportunity to come to talk to you today about our post overdose response team. So first I want to recognize and reflect on how COVID has exacerbated our priority issues from our twenty eighteen Community Health Needs Assessment. So these are things like our healthy lifestyle behaviors, like chronic disease and obesity, mental health and substance use. So we do recognize COVID is a driving factor in how these things have gotten worse. As far as substance use goes, North Carolina does have an opioid action plan that provides evidence-based intervention and tools to address substance use in our community. These fall into three different areas and six different strategies around prevention, reducing harm, connecting individuals to care, and those strategies of reducing supply, supporting families, harm reduction, addressing non-medical drivers of health, like economic development and housing, working with justice-involved populations and treatment and recovery. So as we look to address this very multifaceted and complex issue, we recognize port is just one puzzle piece in this much bigger picture. But I think we can all see what our goal is, which is to help individuals, families, our community, prevent unnecessary disease and death, promote recovery, and offer an alternative to the maladaptive coping strategies that have either been learned or forced on individuals within our community. So in twenty nineteen, I'm going to give a little bit of backstory, talk about what port does, kind of respond to the commissioner's request from back in December and give an example of what has gone on with COVID nineteen. So in twenty nineteen, Rowan County Public Health was awarded the grant from Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina for the implementation of our post overdose response team. So this grant was a part of Blue Cross Blue Shield's ongoing efforts to address substance use disorder and the opioid epidemic, which at the time was escalating and does continue to escalate throughout our state. Since the programs inception and in collaboration with Rowan County Emergency Services and Center for Prevention Services, our agency has worked together to assist both active users and those individuals that are in recovery by offering access to much-needed resources and referrals to treatment. When this grant ended last December, you'll remember the Rowan County Board of Commissioners agreed to continue to financially support the program with the desire to to see more positive results within our community and a return on investment. So that's what I'm here to talk about today. So a little bit more detail about what port is and what we do. Our team consists of a certified peer support specialist, a community paramedic, and a harm reduction program coordinator, all of whom work together to provide immediate response to or following an opioid overdose. Rowan County Emergency Services is an instrumental part of this program. They provide that basic demographic information and contact information for those opioid overdose calls. So once that information's received, our port teams or our peer support specialists, our harm reduction coordinator will make that initial contact with these individuals within twenty four to seventy two hours in order to offer support, connection to services, treatment options, as well as a Narcan kit if one is requested. Then our peer support specialist continues to follow up with that individual at a one, three, and six month time interval after that initial nine one one call is made. So in addition to opioid response services, Port also partners with community agencies like the United Way, like Daymark Recovery Services, like our local schools, to provide support groups and additional educational opportunities that focus on substance use disorder and mental health issues that are often associated with the disease. There's also a very strong connection to suicide prevention because that is a part of this bigger continuum as we look at substance use disorder and mental health, which I, you know, from a public health perspective, that's an incredibly important piece of the bigger picture. So we know that COVID has had an impact on the support that individuals have had within our community. Immediately following the start of travel restrictions, stay-at-home orders and social distancing protocols, there was a countywide surge in Rowan for alcohol purchases and of substance use. We've seen that through data with Salisbury P D. We've seen as soon as you see a stimulus check, you see an increase in overdose and unfortunately overdose fatalities. Many support groups and other services that reached out to individuals suffering from substance use disorders were temporarily unavailable, making recovery even less sustainable to many, especially those who are new in their journey to recovery. Strong and supportive social networks are especially, you know, a critical part in motivating individuals into treatment and giving them the hope of knowing that long-term recovery is possible. So, you know, obviously with COVID, that has been a large impact on those services that have been available and knowing that our community is there to support those individuals. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, we want them to come back into society. We want them to be productive members of our community and they are our loved ones. They are brothers, sisters, mothers, fathers, grandparents, pregnant women. There are children who are all impacted by substance use in our community. So knowing that we did have those COVID guidelines and restrictions, Port transitioned to put more efforts into community outreach using mobile Narcan distribution stations in an effort to prevent and to reduce an opioid-related overdose death. So we know that that was one opportunity we had to go out into the community to reach out to folks who were otherwise inaccessible for these other programs and services. So speaking to the data that the Board of Commissioners requested last year, Port has now collaborated with our county's I T department and G I S manager to strengthen our data collection efforts. By being able to do this, Port is able to gather demographic information for each individual served, identify veteran status if available or applicable, determine access to medical insurance, as well as determine active drug use areas or hotspots within Rowan County. So Port is also creating quality assessment surveys and tools to receive direct feedback from the program participants on how the program can improve if we are to move forward. And so I do want to reflect on the data that was submitted to you. That has transformed over time. You are able to see something a little bit different. And so I do want to to look at that change because to me that reflects a deeper understanding of the program, showing services over overdose doesn't tell you exactly who was able to be reached and then who was able to be served. So you'll have both the columns that are that previous data and the new column with the data that I think better represents what we're doing as a program. So in addition, in addition to incorporating technology into our daily practices, Port also offers a new education model that the commissioners funded originally, the community resiliency model. We now have more than forty individuals in our community trained in this. So this model is to empower individuals with the necessary resiliency skills to help them better control and or overcome their addictions or any past trauma. So it offers six wellness skills that focus on the importance of communication and what is happening in the present moment as opposed to focusing on one's past. So my goal with this and our understanding is we have to heal that trauma so that we can move beyond substance use into that recovery space. And if we all as a community have the language and the tools to help build a resilient community, we're going to be able to weather the storm much, much better because we do know that COVID, again, has exacerbated these issues. We're going to see them as we are seeing them already happen. So again, they have this new set of skills to become more resilient and move past those bad experiences. So it really is about healing our community and that prevention arm that public health focuses on so deeply. So we know that even with all these new services in place, the past year and a half has been life-altering for our community. In twenty twenty alone, North Carolina reported that eight individuals died daily due to overdose. So here in Rowan, the number of overdoses that Port responded to has more than doubled since COVID has happened. So we had a hundred and forty one calls pre-COVID and three hundred and thirty three calls post-COVID. So in addition to the number of overdoses increasing, Rowan has also seen the number of overdose fatalities increase by almost thirteenfold since COVID's inception. So there were three overdose fatalities from October twenty nineteen to March twenty twenty, whereas in that same timeframe, we are, sorry, the number tragically increased to forty overdose deaths, fatalities in twenty twenty one alone. So we know that the timing of these deaths, our community being hit by COVID and COVID's lingering effects on our mental health in our community is not coincidental. So we do definitely know that the pandemic has worsened the mental health of the community and it's great to see that things are changing slowly, hopefully. And we are starting to see more people come together as a community. Saw it last week with the parade or two weeks ago with the parade and the events that are going on. And that's great knowing that we do have some resilience in our community, but there are lots of folks who are struggling and still struggle and need support and need connection when that is what they are seeking for and who are important parts of our community. So we know that in addition to people losing their lives and families being devastated from loved ones' loss, we also see that this impacts our county economy and adds additional stressors to so many of our community partners. So we were able to get some information from Nivon Health Rowan Medical Center showing that IV drug hospitalization costs over two point three million dollars for treatment of a hundred and seventy four cases. So that's for emergency department inpatient and or outpatient care. And reflecting with Nivon Health Rowan Medical Center about this, the payers are across the board. It is self-pay, but it's also Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's also other insurance companies paying for this. It's not just Medicaid or Medicare services. We're really seeing it across the board. And when we talk with the physicians at Nivon Health, they are seeing the impact of substance use cradle to grave from pregnant women, infants, adolescents, young adults, adults and our geriatric patients. We've actually seen a large increase in overdose and substance use disorder with our geriatric patients, which is very concerning. But again, speaks to the disconnect, the social isolation isolation that they felt during COVID. Our Rowan County Detention Center has seen direct correlation with drug use and the rate of crime during the pandemic. So increased medical costs, increased cost of detox services, meals, increased cost of meals for a higher inmate population, transportation for inmates to attend court in other counties as a result of prior arrests for drug activity, increasing the likelihood of altercations among inmates and or staff due to mental health status, increase in cost to hire and train employees to replace those who might want a less stressful position as they're dealing with being in the detention center. The social services budget is also affected as a result of drug use and abuse among our county residents. We saw about fifty percent of those children in foster care were there as a result of substance use being a part of their story. When we I talked with the Social Services Director, Micah Ennis, today, she said the number is probably closer to ninety percent when we look at the numbers this year. So we don't have that data yet, but it will be coming. And that's huge. So if we know a child who is going into foster care has experienced substance use in their background is going to perpetuate this negative cycle unless we're able to to get in there and hopefully heal the soil and stop the abuse. From a public health perspective, we are seeing a direct correlation in the increased rates of hepatitis. So things like we had sixty nine cases of acute hep A and three hundred and twenty five cases of chronic hepatitis C, which is most connected with IV drug use. So we're seeing those rates increase and we're seeing the treatment and need for services as it relates to drug use. So some other sobering statistics, and I promise I I'm not trying to be a Debbie Downer, but this is just the reality of the situation we are facing and we are doing our best to respond to the community need. Seventy five percent of all overdose deaths occur within a three-mile radius of I eighty five and in a street. Seventy four percent of all overdoses in Rowan are from opioids. Heroin and other unknown opioids account for eighty one percent of the death, those opioid deaths in Rowan County. The majority of those overdoses are by Caucasian males ages twenty four to forty five years old. Fentanyl alone accounts for six percent of overdoses, but it is showing up in eighty percent of all illicit drugs, including heroin, cocaine, and street manufactured Xanax. And in September twenty twenty one, like I mentioned before, with suicide prevention, there were twenty eight known suicides or suicide attempts in Rowan County, most likely involved with a mental health issue and or some form of drug use and abuse. So I'm happy to have Ashley come up and share some stories that she has about the program. And then I am also happy to answer any questions that you all have. Our request is that we will respectfully requesting that we be allowed to continue this program. If not, it will end at the end of this month with the American Rescue Plan Act funds as it does pertain to COVID. So you have seen the budget that's been provided in your packet. And so in general, we do want to say thank you so much for letting us work on this for the past three years now. It is a multifaceted issue, multifaceted disease in our community. And we know that this is not going to heal everything, but it is a piece of that much larger puzzle.
I'll ask you about your chart. I'm not being picky on this. All of these numbers mean something. When you look at the received services, well, you begin really with overdoses and fatalities. And when you look at received services, I'm assuming that the the gray line is the total of the six lines above. Again, I'm not just trying, I'm not trying to point out a mistake. I'm trying. It looks like that number forty is not right.
Which page are you looking on?
I'm at this color, the color chart, this one.
Yes, yes. There are two. So there's one that's twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, and then there's a second.
Ten, eleven, twenty one. So the received services, which is one, two, three, four, five, sixth column.
It's six. Are you looking at H, column H, what row?
Well, it's received services and then the total for six months says forty.
I wonder if we have different copies because I have seventy one.
Port report.
Okay.
One we have. You know, one thing we're, I'm sure that most of us look at is now what kind of, who, how many out of these folks that have overdosed are receiving services? It says overdoses for six months totaled three ninety two. Do you see that?
Yes, yeah.
And the fatalities were thirty two.
Yep.
Treatment, seven. Resources, thirty three. Peer counseling, thirty one. And then received services, forty.
I think I may have, you guys have a different version than I do. I have seventy one on mine.
That's the number I come up with.
Yes, yes, I have seventy one.
Our part, our report reads forty. And again, I'm not I'm not trying to correct your math. I'm trying. I'm trying to understand.
It should be seventy one.
Yeah, I mean, it's forty looks bad.
Yeah.
Seventy one's not great, but I anyway, I looked at that and thought, man, I wish that number were higher. It actually is. Okay, I'm sorry. That's.
No, no, you're fine. That's my mistake.
Before others come up, so in twenty nineteen, beginning of your narrative says in twenty nineteen, Run Public Health was awarded two hundred and eighty five thousand. When, when was that and when was that intended to run through?
So that was a grant by my predecessor. So my understanding is that was a two-year program from Blue Cross Blue Shield. So I'm not sure the the start and the end dates for those.
We just tend to think in months as to compare to years, you know, was that a year and a half? Was that two full two years? Was it a year and a month? Okay. And so it was intended, so it was intended to run through December of twenty one?
I believe so. So I believe her and Natalie may have that information or actually may have that information about the grant. And because I believe her original request was from July through the following June for you all for an additional two years last year, and then it was just done for a year. For Nina.
Yeah, because we pulled those funds out of the.
Out of the Medicaid cost settlement.
So the, so the original grant was from Blue Cross for two eighty-five?
Yes, yep.
Pulled money out of the settlement. And how much did we pull out of that? Any? So this ask of, uh, forty, that will obviously pick up beginning at the end of December or January one, I, I guess, something like that. And, and how long is that expected to last?
A year. So because of the additional position with the, um, additional peer support specialist to help assist Ashley, because of the number of overdoses have increased, it has gotten to the cap, she is at capacity with the number of people she can reasonably reach in twenty-four to seventy-two hours. So without that additional staff person being able to reach those folks in our goal, um, is not going to be as efficient or effective without a second individual.
But how many folks do you reach in the first, what'd you say, hour?
In the first twenty, twenty-four to seventy-two hours.
Twenty-four to seventy-two, okay. And how mu, and what percentage was that? Seventy-five percent? Is that what you said?
I'm not sure.
The nine-one-one, nine-one-one calls that you receive for overdose. How quickly did you respond to them and did you respond to a hundred percent of them or some percentage less than that?
Yeah, so you can see when we look at, um, the successful contact versus folks who have declined help, those are the ones that we've reached out to, um, versus the ones that we were not able to make contact with. And Ashley, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay. So that's included on here. So it varies month to month, and it varies from those individuals who will return our call, who we do have good phone numbers, those phone numbers aren't disconnected, all of those pieces.
I, I think, I think you're, um, I think you've got receptive ears here tonight, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, but we, I s, I still want to understand some stuff. I think one thing I'm, I'm trying to understand is in twenty nineteen, Blue Cross awarded a two-year grant for two eighty-five, but then, so that was, would have been for twenty nineteen and twenty. Okay, and so then what we did is we came back and did another, about three hundred thousand for twenty-one. All right, so that takes us to current, okay. I'm, I need a chalkboard. Okay, I'm, I'm up to speed with you now. Okay.
Alyssa, the, um, statistics you gave out, starting with, I think, you said seventy-five percent of all overdoses within, was it three miles of Inn Street? Those statistics aren't in here anywhere, are they? I didn't see them.
I can't, sorry, I'm, I can't hear you.
The statistics weren't in this report, I don't think, were they? Those are just things you brought.
So there's a, um, there's a document, uh, not the S-bar that was presented or the memo, um, that says proposal to continue port funding for, um, it should say fiscal year twenty-two. So it's a longer report, um, that was attached. It has all the statistics that I reported, uh, and it includes the, um, uh, related North County, Rowan, or Nivon Health Rowan Medical Center, Detention Center, Social Services, Public Health.
Okay, so those are in that?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
And that is on page one, two, three, four, on page four.
Four, okay.
All right, we're ready.
Questions? Are you ready for Ashley?
Hi, good afternoon. It's so nice to see everybody today and to be able to talk. Um, so again, I'm the Certified Peer Support Specialist with the, uh, Post-Overdose Response Team here in Rowan County. I'm so grateful to be a part of this county effort, the county effort to, um, prevent overdose and to be able to assist those who are currently struggling with substance use disorder. Um, I am a person in recovery myself, um, and so that what, that is what makes me uniquely qualified to do the work that I am able to do. I get that front row seat with those participants. I get to sit with people and cry. I get to sit with people and talk about the hope that we have to be able to get better. I get to be able to reach out to those individuals who may not have support around them and support them and let them know that they are not alone. I have been able to read, we have seen people as young as twelve years old overdose and as old as, I think, seventy-seven, I think is how, what I've seen, um, from an opiate overdose. Um, and for a variety of different reasons. Um, and I wanted today, since so many people aren't represented in a, in a statistic, um, to just share a few stories about our port program and who we've been able to reach. Just to take up a little bit of your time. And one story that I wanted to start with was actually a person that was directly, affected by COVID nineteen. Um, this is a participant who is forty-seven years old and he is wished, he has given me permission to share a little bit of, a few of his words and a little bit of his story. He is somebody who had actual back pain or who had a back problem and was, was prescribed, uh, opiate medication for that back problem. He had, um, since not been on that medication and during COVID nineteen unfortunately lost his wife to COVID nineteen. Um, he recalled that he had leftover prescription of that medic, uh, leftover medication from that prescription and realizing that it had an effect that helped numb him. He went back to that medication and tried to take it like he was prescribed. And unfortunately, his tolerance was no longer there because he was not on that medication and experienced a fatal overdose where, or a fatal, a lethal intake of that medication. And EMS was called and luckily via Narcan was revived. Um, the Post-Overdose Response Team responded to that gentleman and we, I got to talk to him for a very long time, and he spoke to me about what was going on in his life. We were able to refer him to grief counseling. It was a free resource that's actually through hospice. Even if you don't lose some, somebody through hospice in Rowan County, you are allowed to get thirteen months of free grief counseling. Him and his twelve-year-old son were able to participate in that service. And these are a few of his words after we followed up with him that he wanted me to share with you guys today. So he said, "Nothing will prepare anyone for what happened to me and my son. Grief counseling helped tremendously. If I hadn't done it, I wouldn't be where I am today. My son and I are surviving. It's not perfect, but we are making it. People need to know that we need people to help us through these hard times. We can't do it alone. If you have the right people around you, anything is possible." I'm so grateful that we were able to come in and, and allow that gentleman and his son to utilize that service and allow, I am so grateful that I was allowed to be a part of that gentleman's walk and that recovery, that he's coming out of that dark time in his life. Um, I also wanted to share a story from a gentleman who was one of our first participants. And, um, I spoke with him again yesterday, and he wanted me to share a few words with you guys today. Um, I met him, he was in a very, very dark place. He was somebody who struggled with, um, addiction for thirty years. Thirty years. And, um, he came to me, or we came to him and he wanted to utilize some services, and we were able to, through a lot of counseling, and let me tell you something, we went back and forth with this gentleman for about a year, where I supported him, continued to answer questions, because he had a lot of fear associated with letting go of what he knew and going into something new, which I can completely ra, relate to as someone who struggled for seventeen years. Um, after so many different conversations, we were able to finally get him to a long-term treatment program. And as of today, he has been clean for two years. Um, we, uh, he said, "They absolutely saved my life like they have so many others. They, the work they are doing by providing Narcan is helping addicts stay safe as possible as they, as they possibly can while in the grips of a total mental and physical disease." But it goes further. It's the hope that Ashley and her team brings to people that are looking for just the smallest sliver of light to search out what most of us ultimately want, to get better. Please, I ask you to continue the funding of the port program. By doing so, you may save one more life as it has saved mine. Thank you for listening. He was also, he also wanted me to share with y'all how he was reunited with his son after several years of not communicating, and he was able to meet his four-year-old grandson who he has never seen. And we are just so thankful that we were able to be a part of that. And these are only a few stories of the many stories that I have from being able to work with the public, um, and through this program. And I know that it may not see, and you know, so many people, even though we are able to contact them, we do not get to follow up with them forever. We sometimes lose contact and that is unfortunate, you know, because their lives move on. Um, you know, they go to different places, they go to different towns to even recover, you know, but I know that there are so many more stories that we never heard and that we don't have in the data that have proven that lives have gotten better. You know, I know that a peer support specialist is what initially helped me to start my journey in recovery, and I'm sure he wonders what happens to, happened to me, and I can't even remember the gentleman's name, but I'm so grateful because sometimes I wish I could go back and tell him thank you. But I was in a different state of mind, you know, as I'm in my right mind now, I wish I could, but I just can't. And so, um, I thank you so much for allowing me to share some information of a few of these stories. And I wondered, I didn't know if, if a gentleman who is one of our participants wanted to share a little bit about his story and his journey with port, and I didn't know if y'all would let him come up and do that.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Zachary. Uh, I'm grateful recovering addict and alcoholic. I've, uh, I was a participant, as she said, in this program. I've literally struggled with addiction since I was four years old when I first discovered mouthwash. And, uh, you know, there are a lot of dark aspects that whenever I try to explain them to people about my life with addiction that they don't understand. They don't, you know, uh, no matter how open-minded they are, um, I can't explain to you the pain of going weeks without even hearing your own name spoken, without even having that level of intimacy with another human being. I can't explain the pain of living a life where you hurt the people that love you the most over and over again against what, what I believe is against my own will, you know? To overdose and instantly just go try, crave the same thing that almost just killed me, you know? And, uh, I never understood the depth of my own trauma. I never knew what to do about my problem. Like, it was very obvious that I had a problem. One day I, one night I overdosed, uh, it was actually an attempt at living in a recovery home and even though they had agreed to let me stay, there I went again and I, I overdosed and I got kicked out. And I had plans of suicide. Uh, I mean, I very determined plans of suicide, and I got a phone call from Ashley Creek. And I heard that my name spoke and I heard somebody, they called me and let me, she let me know that she cares. She let me know why she does what she does. And the fact that she was doing what she was doing gave me hope. She gave me resources and one thing led to another, and today I'm an active participant in Narcotics Anonymous and Alcoholics Anonymous. I have ten months and twenty-six days without any mind-altering substances. I'm working a thorough program. Today, I'm connected with my family. I didn't see my mother for eight years. I've reunited with her. I spent Thanksgiving with my brother, who used to, could not be around me because I would steal belongings to go get high. I have a contact list full of people who are also in recovery because of these resources, because of what the ball that she got rolling. I have people that I can call night and day with any problem that I have or any emotion that I feel. And I've gone from not hearing my name on a weekly basis to having what I consider a family of recovering addicts, having somebody that will answer the phone at any time. My life, my life was not a life before recovery, and I never knew that any of it was possible until I got that phone call from Ashley Creek that night and heard the sincerity of her voice. And she, and heard that she is also in recovery, and I am so extremely grateful today for what she did that night because I would not be walking, I would not be talking, I would not be breathing. My brother would have lost his second brother, or it would have been the second brother that he lost to this disease. My mother would have lost a son to this disease if it had not been that phone call. So thank you for your time. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Is it, uh, is it Zachary? Zachary? We've all been here at least seven years and, uh, had a lot of folks at the mic. Um, that took more courage than anything I've, I've heard since I've been here. So God bless you. And, um, your story is compelling. Um, continue to pray for you and your recovery and that you'll touch the lives of others. We appreciate you, uh, having the courage to stand up here and talk to us today.
Thank you so much.
Do you all have any questions?
So does every, uh, so every overdose in the county is referred to you through merge services? Is that how it works?
Mm-hmm, yes. Uh, so we do work with a community paramedic who does review, uh, the instances that they are getting calls. And from my discussions with Ashley and our team, it's not just those very blatant overdose calls. Um, they actually go through and look into the reports to see if there's anything that could be associated with that. Uh, because sometimes what overdose, what someone's being called for an overdose, we don't know that that's actually an overdose. It's kind of referred to something else, um, heart problems or, or something else like that.
Do you get referrals from any other first responders or any other people, any other groups, or is it just from?
So we do have, we are on NC Care three sixty for the community, so a community agency that is connected to that program, which is a state-run program, could, um, in turn refer through there or from word of mouth, um, could send us a referral over. But as far as a, like, dedicated pipeline, that is going to be our, our dedicated pipeline is that community paramedic.
So if you had, um, I don't know, say a volunteer fire department goes to the same place over and over and over, and they don't really see anything happening, are they able to, uh, refer? Is there a process in place for that?
Do you get calls from volunteer fire departments?
No, I have not.
Yeah, but we'd be open to those conversations and open to that connection. I mean, it's a, it's simply like making the referral network more robust.
So I'm, well, I guess my main thing is there like a phone number they can call? Is there some process in place or they would just call you? How would they find out, I guess?
I have a, we have a card that has my direct cell phone, just my direct cell, work cell phone number on it that people call to get in and come by the week. And I do, I have calls all the time from people from word of mouth, like she said, or from a community partner.
We also have a, a new webpage for Rowan County, um, you know, Rowan County NC.gov slash health. There's a port page that connects to these folks and kind of tells you what the program is, who to connect to, who's our harm reduction versus our. certified peer support specialists.
So do you get a lot of, uh, I know it's posts, but do you work, try to work? If you think there are people who are going to be overdosing, do you try to get to them beforehand?
Yeah. So one of the things that they do is they had a support group at Daymark Recovery Services. And obviously COVID has impacted a lot of that. So you work with those individuals who are already experiencing mental health concerns. Uh, we also do outreach walks. So they're going out into the community and especially with individuals who are experiencing homelessness, connecting with them ahead of time, um, to see what it is that we can do to connect them to services and treatment. So they don't have to go down the path of an overdose and we can work to prevent that. Uh, but there are lots of different avenues, just education, um, community awareness, community, uh, programming that does go into that main focus on prevention because we don't want to see someone overdose. We don't want them to have to get to that point to get connected to services.
All right, thank you.
Any, any veterans?
So that's, yeah, that's one of the, the pieces of data that we're working on, but we do have veterans, um, who are connected. And there's a little bit of that stigma that they're fighting versus going to the VA, um, or reaching out for services that way. So connecting with Ashley first and then being able to be referred into services and letting them know it, it's okay that you're not going to be judged, that there is this large effort with the Salisbury VA to address stigma within that community.
I want to make sure they were being connected to existing services this.
I think it's incredibly important, especially for a community like Salisbury where we have so many veterans, that, that, that's an open door. I know there are ongoing conversations about how do we bring groups together to talk about suicide prevention and mental health for veterans, for, um, police, for emergency service providers because of the level of stress that they're dealing with. That, you know, the coping strategies that they're using when they go home may not be the best.
Alan, wouldn't you, wouldn't you receive some notice from all the fire departments that are, are administering Narcan? It looks to me like every can of Narcan that went out, you would, you would get a report on it somehow.
Yes, sir. That would come from the original dispatch into 911. And the community paramedic that works for emergency services pulls those calls daily to find that information. So if EMS is going out.
Eight hours behind the actual overdose.
Right.
Okay.
And the fire department always goes out with EMS on those types of calls so they can get there.
But if this is the program that we choose to continue, if, if each one of these folks would be contacted within 24 hours or whatever the time is then.
Twenty-four to seventy-two.
Twenty-four seventy-two.
Even for volunteer fire departments?
I don't know if that's being done now, but it can be done.
Yeah, I mean, that, um, I knew I had. Thanks Jim and Mike for bringing that up. So that's an easy connection, isn't it? Whether we can have them come out to a chief's meeting?
Yes.
Part of what we do. Um, my, my last question and certainly want to pay respect to this issue, but I don't want to drag it out longer. We need to. And, and this, this will be a cold question. So just prepare yourself. There's, this, this is about the math of stuff, okay?
The what? Sorry.
Math of, of, and so I want to get Commissioner Klusman involved. And again, I, um, I know you're working on a bigger topic, but I would imagine that this is within the confines of that topic. Yeah. And, and, um, my understanding is it, it's something that we'll probably, um, learn about here in the next um, relatively sh- short period of time. So my, my question is, is, and I think you're part of this conversation with Novon and you and United Way and, and all of that.
Yes, sir.
So my, my cold question is, um, we're being asked to fund this, uh, $240,000 for the next year. So as you know, we come up to budget in July. My expectation is that this topic is something that will also be uh, kind of absorbed into the larger topic that you guys are working on. So it, it, and I, I may be wrong about that. I'm asking that question is, is this topic of, of port and its activities going to be uh, under the overall discussions of the broader discussion that you all are having? And so therefore would, would it be, um, appropriate then instead of, uh, funding this for the whole year to fund it until our budget comes up in June? Um, and we have further discussions about the larger topic of, of what you all are uniting on.
Can I take that one?
Yeah, it's, I wanted you to take it. So, yeah.
Okay. So the port program is located in the health department. So while there's synergy there and collaboration and coordination, that will remain, um, in the health department along with EMS person being in EMS. So it's, it's a supportive of where we're going of the bigger program. So it's kind of like all the pieces of the puzzle and.
So we are working on, uh, a sequential intercept map. When we look at the bigger issue of substance use in our community. And so looking at those entry points that different individuals have, uh, whether that's the detention center, whether that's through Daymark, whether that's connection with port, um, to understand where those levers are and, and knowing what may be coming in the future. I see, and I, I am hopeful with the opioid settlement funding that that is going to be a funding source for port because of the connection that opioids have, have caused this issue. That is my hope. I am absolutely in line with looking at funding it for six months and seeing how it plays a part in this bigger role and maybe what additional information we get, um, in those next six months for a program like this. I would love to, for us not to have to have this program, honestly, like that's, that's the long-term goal. Is that we have worked and healed our community that yes, there, you know, may be a long-term issue, but that we don't have to have this level of care for our community.
I just know there's a lot of, um, smart people having these conversations and this seems to me to be part of this overall conversation and, um, so I, I, I would be more comfortable funding this for six months with the expectation that it's part of the larger community discussion. I, I'm certain that this fits within our care funding and can come out either way. So this, this isn't really a, a budgeting problem, but it'll also kind of make sure that this conversation is part of the larger conversation and not just funded for a year and and, and able to be left on its own if it should be part of the bigger conversation. And she needs to be running this discussion instead of me. You know, I only know little parts of it, but it seems to me this all, you know, in the education component of, of things here in the county, we talk about building silos of excellence, right? That's supposed to be a funny term. And so, uh, we're trying to break those down. And so I don't know if port survives. When I say survives is port intended to be running for the, for the long-term. I know you say you don't want it to be, but is it going to be standalone, separate from the larger discussion? I would hope not. Yeah. So, and I wouldn't anticipate that it is. So, you know, I don't want this to be a disappointing statement, but I'd like to fund it for a half year because I think that really drives us to include that port into this, oh, larger discussion.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I think that that is very reasonable and that we can then get all of the port program together at our July 1 start of the new fiscal year.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions?
And I'm going to make sure that you all have the updated data and make sure you have that document that I read off of. So if you have any questions to after, please, please reach out. And any ideas, I love that idea of the volunteer fire department, making sure that they are well aware of these services for our community. No one should not be able to connect.
Just connect with Alan and he'll let you know when the chief.
Perfect. Thank you so much for your time.
So, um, from our position, if, if we would carry through with, um, six months, that'd be a hundred and twenty thousand, basically $200. Yeah, we'll have a motion in a second, then we can discuss if we need it any further.
Just, is there not any, um, is your equipment being bought or anything?
Do we need equipment, Ashley? Or, I'm sorry, Alyssa?
Where's the Narcon?
I'm struggling to hear today. I don't know what, what my deal is. What, what was the question about equipment?
I guess you just divide it in half. So is, would that work?
It's a good question. Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah. Just, is there any equipment with this request? I didn't think so.
No, it's, uh, contracted services, salary and fringe, um, some supplies and then meeting expenses related to that substance use forum.
So just cutting in halves fine, or do you need more than half?
Um, the only thing that I would, uh, say and consider is the substance use forum, having the full funding for that, for that fifth year, instead of cutting that in half. Um, that would be my request.
Mike's getting at is when we hire a sheriff deputy at whatever that number is, you got to provide a car and so there's upfront costs that we have. So dividing something in half doesn't work for that. Right? So that, I think that's wisely what Mike is asking is, is dividing it in half okay? Or does it need to be some other number?
Cause I think, I think the true equipment that, that our peer support specialist has received is a telephone and a computer.
Right. Yeah.
So the form of 3,000, you wouldn't divide?
I would ask that, that not be divided.
All right. So.
Everything else is.
So, um, uh, 122,000, 23,000, 123,000.
123,000 would be great.
I move that we continue the port program and with the addition of $123,000 to continue this supportive program.
Taken from CARES Act funds?
CARES Act.
I, I just have a question. Judy, when you folks get together and talk about this, is there any discussion about duplication of services? Cause she's talking about handing out Narcon to all these folks. I know the fire department also does the same thing when they get a drug overdose. And I, I just don't understand.
So, uh, we actually do distribute our Narcan to those individuals. So, um, city of Salisbury for the, the police, we work with them to get the Narcan in their hands. It depends on, you know, we're not duplicating, we're, we're helping assist and we can request Narcan from the state.
Now, wait a minute. You, you distribute it. What does that mean? Anybody that walks in can get it or?
They do have to go through a training in order to use it. But we are able, we have a standing order from the state public health medical director to distribute Narcan ourselves.
So you're, you're talking about using it. Are you talking about folks that work for you or are you talking about addicts that come in and want to keep it on hand?
In terms of using it? Or who, 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 um, distributes and then gives it in recovery? So our staff are the ones to give it out. We don't use it on other individuals. Those individuals would then use it on themselves.
Jim?
Who do we distribute it to? Okay, okay. Yes. Uh, we do distribute it to, um, individuals who request it. So that may be an individual who is experiencing, um, substance use disorder.
Or it could be a parent.
It could be a parent. And that's, um,
So there.
We distribute it to so many different type of people. But we, a lot of parents, a lot of siblings of people who have, you know, a loved one with substance use disorder. And then we do, in fact, uh, we distribute it to people who, um, are in neighborhoods that where they see a lot of drug use. Um, I've had, we've had a lot of that as well. And then we distribute it to people who are currently experiencing substance use disorder. And that's to prevent, you know, overdose death and of course to prevent a lot of ER visits and EMS calls. Yes.
Is the health department central agency that receives and then distributes it to Salisbury and the fire departments, or do they get it?
So I do believe they get the, you guys get it them yourself, right? Thank you.
The Narcan that's used by emergency services, the county actually buys it through general fund. And then it's reimbursed back to the fire departments. So they, they have a certain supply of whatever they use it. We just give them one off our truck. Just places are.
That includes volunteer departments too?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think I'd heard that.
What kind of money are we talking about now?
Commissioner, I can't, I'm trying to see invoice now off the top of my head, but I believe I hate to tell you the wrong thing, Commissioner, I think Narcan is somewhere around $15 a vial.
No, no. I mean, how many bottles do we distribute to you?
We're not distributing.
Are we talking about $10,000 or $50,000 a year?
Budget's 9,000 for the year.
Yeah. Mine's, my budget's different. Yeah, my budget's different. I had to go back and look. I'm not sure how much we use right off the right off the top of my head and I don't have it in front of me. But it would be, it would be different from that. Our budget's completely separate from anything else from Narcan.
All right, um, anymore? All right, we got a motion in a second. Um, any further discussion? All right, if not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's move to, um, our planning retreat. We've got these calendars in front of us. Carolyn, it is, uh, are there dates that are, I, I'd like to do something in January just because it's earlier in the year. Um, and we've been, what, I think one day is enough. Is there any guidance you need to give us about days to stay away from? Uh, what day? 20th. So uh, is not a good day. January 20th is not seven. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at 2021. I'm so sorry. Want to do that?
Sounds good to me.
Make it on the 18th and just, Mike, does that work for you?
Yeah, we'd start like 5:30. Afternoon. Yeah, that's good. Yes.
All right. Uh, so just make a note of it, January 18th. Um, nine o'clock, nine o'clock.
Is it going to take that long?
I don't know. You tell me.
I don't go from nine in the morning to nine at night.
Well, then noon?
And then that way we'll go right into our, whoever food and we'll go. Hold on a minute. Judy's got it.
All right, good. All right, uh, next item, budget amendments, uh, motion approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let me go through some board appointments. So Board of Adjustment. Sean Reed has applied for reappointment. And Brad, uh, Bradford Basinger applied for a vacant seat, uh, motion to approve those two.
Aye.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Norman Riblin applied for reappointment. He served two terms, but. Norman Riblin applied for reappointment. He served two terms, but no other applications received. We have a motion to waive the two-term limit for Norman.
So moved.
Say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve Norman.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Airport Advisory Board, the Airport Advisory Board bylaws specify the term ending dates for all members should be June 30th. Based on this, the commissioners are asked to ratify the term expiration dates for the members as these members change the term ending dates for Bill Lucy and John Muth from July 31st, 2024 to June 30th, 2024. And change the term ending date for Rick Franklin from December 31st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. We have a motion to approve those.
So, yeah, we're just basically staggering terms so that everybody doesn't come off the board at the same time. Okay.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The Cabarrus Rowan, MPO, Ed Muir is our current TCC representative. Shane is the alternate. We were asked to reappoint these two. Motion in a second for that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The Health Board in October.
Because you and Jim are on there too.
Yeah, I was just looking at it. Yeah, so Jim. Yeah, we'll vote on that. So I'm on there and Jim is the alternate. Motion in a second for that.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Health Board, on October 4th, we appointed Dr. Melanie Dombrowski to fill the remaining three months of a term for an optometrist seat, which expires December 31st. Were asked to reappoint, reappoint her for a new three-year term. Motion in a second to approve her.
Back it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Following members applied for reappointment, three-year terms. And again, this is for the Health Board. Dr. Watlington, Dr. Fuller and Dr. Connolly. So do we have motion in a second on those? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carla Rose applied for a general public seat that'll become vacant on December 31st. Motion to approve Carl in a second.
Thanks.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
JCPC, Sean Reed has applied to fill a vacant seat from the general public. Motion in a second for Sean. Juvenile crime prevention applied, he applied to fill a vacant seat for a member of the general public. The remainder of the term will expire on June 30th, 2022, at which time he'll be eligible for reappointment.
Probably a resume.
There's an interim seat that's been emptied. I do. He's a good friend. He's a great guy. Yeah. No, no, Sean's a good guy. We've already approved him on another Board of Adjustment, yeah. So, yeah, Sean, motion in a second.
So moved. Thanks.
Say aye.
Aye.
Local Emergency Planning Committee, Lieutenant Joe Miller applied for a vacant public safety seat. And Angela Ford applied to fill the vacant media seat. Motion in a second for them. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Library Board, Jennifer Nicholson and Pam Bloom applied for reappointment. And that will expire December 31st, 2024. Gary Freeze applied, oh, let's see. Okay, so we'll vote to appoint Jennifer and Pam Bloom. Motion in a second for them.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gary Freeze applied for reappointment, but he served two full terms. So do we have a motion to waive that?
Is there a vacancy?
There is. No, no one else is applying.
Okay.
All right, motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So then motion to approve Gary Freeze. All in favor, say aye. The ex officio seat is up. Per the library board's bylaws, to be filled by the president of Friends of Rowan Public Library. Jenny Hubbard is that president and asked to appoint her. Motion in a second for her. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Parks and Recreation, Ashley Horn Barrier, applied to fill a seat, become vacant December 31st. No, Miss Parks and Recreation. Yep, motion in a second.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Cool Town Volunteer Fire Department, Fire Commissioners, Tom Stoner and Dylan Barkley applied. Motion in a second for them. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Nope, you got 12A.
Well, you're on it today. All right, what do you have, Aaron?
It's
Oh, we pulled item G.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a change to it. The budget amendment that's attached to it currently reaches 12 million, 987 and it should, I mean, thank you, 12,000, 987. And that should be 16,987 for both, for both lines. And that's for the revenue and expenditure. It's just a a transposed number.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
Favor.